Call meeting order please. And welcome all of you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Edington Town Council for the month of May. We will follow our agenda tonight as is our custom. Councilman Dixon called me prior to this meeting and he will be arriving late. He got caught in a traffic jam coming out of Raleigh, which is no surprise depending on the time of the day. So if you would now please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for an invocation offered by Councilman Biggs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Eternal Father, we are so grateful for all the blessings that you have given us this day. And Father, we just thank you that you are allowing this time for us to do the business of the people of Edington. We pray that our minds will be open and that we will be receptive to do the right thing. Father, we just thank you for the good health and strength that you are returning to our town manager's husband. We again thank you for that. Through Christ we pray. Amen.
Before we get started, as Councilman Biggs mentioned in his invocation, I got a text message from our manager, Anne Marie Knighton, just prior to our meeting at about 5:45. And she asked me to share with all of you that Ernest is out of surgery and that she wants to thank each and every one of you for your thoughts and prayers relative to that surgery. So anyway, the procedure's over, he's in recovery, and she wanted me to share that message with you. All right, item four tonight is minutes approval. The council chair entertain a motion to approve the meetings as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Okay. Notion number two to approve. Any questions or comments? Here in all favor, I.
Aye.
Any opposed note? All right, we will record them. Tonight, under item five, we're going to have presentations. There'll be three of them, beginning with our departing town planner, Sam Barrow is here. Sam, if you would, please come forward. We'd love to hear from you.
All right, make a little room here. So good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate you having me again tonight unofficially or officially not the town planner here anymore, but I've accepted a position in Purkhummus County, as you all know. But this evening, I'm here tonight in my official capacity as the commanding officer of Compaunier First Battalion, 252nd Armored Regiment, 30th Armor Brigade Combat Team, North Carolina Army National Guard from Williamson. So when I was hired in 2012, I'd just returned from a year-long deployment to Afghanistan. So with no other prospects, I had taken a temporary job and go to Washington roofing houses and pouring concrete. On a whim, I applied for the planner vacancy here in Edenton. And in my interview, I explained to Anne Marie my reserve obligations and she was well aware of the deployment I'd just come from. And still, she and you all decided to take a chance on me. So little did I know that my new roles, so at the time, like I said, I'd just returned, I was appointed as the executive officer of this same company I'm in now, followed by a staff officer in battalion in Fayetteville, and then as commander in 2014. So again, so little did I know my new roles would take me away from Edenton for well more than the advertised and agreed upon one weekend a month and two weeks during the summer. So when I got the call again in 2015 and knew that the strain would cause or put on the town staff, Anne Marie in particular, so still without hesitation, she and you all supported me until I returned and then some, as I continued to emerge back into, out of the military mindset, back into civilian mode. So at the time, I didn't realize how lucky I was to have folks like y'all back here until I talked to some of my other returning soldiers and realized that they had not received the same kind of support that I had when I was gone. So in fact, in particular, it's practically unheard of for a manager to assume her employee's entire workload for the course of a year, which thoroughly impressed me. And I wish Anne Marie was here tonight for me to say that to, but unfortunately, she's not. I understand why she can't be here. So, Mr. Mayor, with my sincerest gratitude, I'd like to present the town with a couple of things. So if you could, please come forward. Okay, so first, Mr. Mayor, this is for the town of Edenton. It says, presents to the town of Edenton in recognition of your unwavering support for Compaunier First Battalion, 252nd Armored Regiment, Archangels, North Carolina National Guard, 2012 through May 2017. This is our company guy on, so I'm the only one that's allowed to present this. And so please accept that on behalf of me and my soldiers.
Wow, thank you so much.
And if you would, sir, since Anne Marie's not here, if you would please receive this one.
Wasn't that in Edenton at the old armory?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Out here once upon a time?
I believe that was, they used to be the 119, and that's since been dissolved.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's still around.
Okay, I remember that patch.
Again, this is in particular for Anne Marie. So this says, presents to Anne Marie Knighton, town manager, town of Edenton, North Carolina, in grateful appreciation of your support to the command team of Compaunier First Battalion, 252nd Armored Regiment, Archangels, North Carolina Army National Guard. Your flexibility and understanding of the burden of command directly impacted the success of the company at home and abroad from July 2012 to May 2017, and also for Operation Joint Guardian K-420, April 2015 through April 2016. And these here are two of the 25-millimeter rounds that are Bradley 5G.
Wow.
So again, please extend my gratitude to her when she returns back and my well wishes to Ernest.
Thank you again. Captain?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This one get a bad guy?
No, no, you need actually a third round to go on that one.
This one looks like we're flying off to do some damage. But let me say this, in all sincerity, we really enjoyed your presence as a member of our staff. You've done a wonderful job. You've learned a lot on the job and it's been a great asset, as you said, in your overview, particularly to our town manager, because it's a great burden to keep up with all of the ordinances and the development requirements and so forth, what you've done. Admirable. And for that, we thank you and wish you well in your next few quarters. And more particularly, we also appreciate this captain's bars that you wear proudly on your uniform. We respect a great deal of admiration, the service that you give to the United States and those to our town, so thanks for your best of luck.
Appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Thank you very much.
Wow. Nice. Okay, presenting next tonight, as you all know, or if you don't, we require organizations that the town council appropriates funding to on an annual basis to come and give us an update on their past activities and future plans. So tonight, we're privileged to have Sally Francis Kihey and Mike Irving from the Edenton Historical Commission, and they're going to share some information with us about their activities both fast and in future.
Yes, thank you.
Well, good to have you.
May I?
Sure.
Well, I'm delighted to be here once again, and it seems as though this past year's gone by very quickly. I'd like to introduce to you with us tonight, we have Mike Irving, who is the executive director, Danielle Barker, who is our house and volunteer manager, Ben Speller, who is the secretary for the Edenton Historical Commission. And we are all pleased to be here. I won't go over this paper word for word, but I do hope that you will, at your leisure, read and see what we've done in the last year. It's been a very busy year. I want to talk a little bit more about some things that are happening in 2017. And again, I won't mention everything because there's a lot going on. But there are three things in particular that we are very excited about and very proud to be a part of. And I've also asked John Moorhead to be here tonight because he's been very instrumental in two of those. And one you are very well aware of because it has to do with the Cades Church and the restoration of the church. And the Edenton Historical Commission has taken on an agreement with the congregation that we will be the financial partner with the church during the restoration. So as funds come in, they will be managed through the Barker House, through our accounting process. And that way, the church can focus on the projects that they're going to do that help with the restoration. And the grants that come in will be handled by Mike Irving, who has lots of experience handling grants. So we're very excited to be a part of that process. John, as you know, helped write two of the beginning grants. And so we are very thankful to you, John, for being a part of that process. The second project that we're very excited about this year, John has also been involved with, as has Dawson Tyler, who is the chairperson of our committee related to the 1825 jail. And we've entered into a license agreement with Chawan County. And we will be responsible for the restoration and preservation of that building with the plan that at some point this summer, hopefully sooner rather than later, it will be available for visitors. And as you may have seen in an email that Nancy Nichols was distributing today, tourism has now in North Carolina had, 2016 was its greatest year. The greatest number of tourists visiting, the greatest amount of revenue that people are spending as they tour. And so we know certainly that in eastern North Carolina and in our community, that that's a very important part of what happens. So with that in mind, the staff of the Barker House has determined that they can manage being open from 10 until 5, seven days a week. And as I was arriving here, I looked over and saw two people standing, looking, reading the museum trail sign. So we know that there are people still around even after we think everybody's gone home. They haven't. They're still arriving. So we're excited to be able to offer an additional amount of time for visitors to be here in Edenton. And along with that, and I'm sorry, Councilman Quinn is not here, you know, the walking museum trail, which opened in 2016, was a project, an idea of his, that he nurtured to its completion. Well, another idea that he's been thinking about for a number of years has to do with what he would call an ambassador program. And the idea is that so many people come into Edenton and they want to know what's Edenton like, what's it like to live here, what's it like to be in a small town. I'm thinking about relocating. Should I consider Edenton? Or I'm traveling up and down the waterways, or I'm traveling up and down the coast looking for a place to relocate. Should I consider Edenton? Well, Danielle Barker is putting together what we're calling Alba Marl's ambassadors. And these will be volunteers who will be a part of the Barker House, but they also will be ambassadors for the community. And they will have, I guess, a pin, a ribbon that says, "Ask me." And whenever they come into town, or if they're in town shopping, and they choose to, they can wear that so that anybody can walk up and say, "Well, what can I ask you?" And then they can say, "Well, I'm an ambassador for the town of Edenton, and let me tell you some things." So we're very excited about that. We think that again is a great outreach to visitors, maybe even to people who live here. So those, yes, you're excused. So those are several things that are in the process of happening for 2017. And we want you to know that, and I think this is sort of a bottom line, our audit was completed this year. It was an unqualified audit. We are taking very good care of the money that you give to us and that comes to us from all of the other donors. We receive no state or federal funding, so every penny that comes to us is important and is well-handled. And we thank you very much for your support of the Edenton Historical Commission. And did I also mention that John had been involved in the jail? Did I say that? Oh, okay. All right, I'm just making sure. So we have lots of volunteers. John is an example of volunteers who do many, many things, from being in the Barker House on a daily basis, to helping with special events, to helping with Taste of Edenton, the Christmas Candlelight Tour, and the Music by the Bass Series, which kicks off Sunday the 21st, which is not this weekend, but the next weekend. And the first band will be Dr. Paul Richmond's band. And it will be from 2 to 4 in the afternoon, and I believe that's Mother's Day, isn't it? May 21st? So it's a great thing.
It's not.
It's the weekend after. Oh, even more reason to come. Great. May I answer questions? Just ask me.
Councilmembers, anybody have anything for Sally Francis or her team?
This answers about anything we can answer.
Well, once again, thank you very much for your hard work. We often refer to Barker House as Edenton's living room, but it's on an occasion like this where we and the general public can have a greater appreciation for the other things that you and your team do throughout the community. So it does not go unrecognized nor unappreciated.
Thank you.
We thank you very much and keep up the good work.
Great. Thank you all very much.
You're very welcome. All right, next, just in time, Councilman Dixon.
Did you get those videos? Okay. The, when they were in order, so I think, so what I just wanted, I'll actually go up here. Sorry I'm late. We had bad traffic getting back from Raleigh. So I'm on the National Main Street Board in Chicago, and we had our annual meeting in Pittsburgh last week, and I was so excited, I called Anne Marie and I said, "You know, there's so much cool stuff going on." And these are just two quick videos I thought that were inspiring about, one's about what Main Street does, the whole program, and the other one's about one town that actually won. And we are working on a commitment to get this board to come to Edenton in May or June of 2019 to meet here. So it's made up of some of the most fascinating people that I've ever known. And they had, I don't know, almost 2,000 people show up in Pittsburgh. And they're just dedicated people that work in small, little towns. And one of the most interesting things is, The New York Times had an op-ed recently that said, "Main Street is Dead." And it just, it was amazing, the uproar and the, you know, what it caused nationwide, and what the effect of these small Main Streets in America is, and how they're actually able to combat or go along with and create value when some of the bigger stores can't fight or can't compete against online sales. These small places are doing a much better job because they're interesting. And the amount of tax revenue that comes in from a small place is so much higher. I mean, one thing, I don't think you'll see it on this, that I thought was interesting is, a national chain has rolled out two different prototypes. And one is a traditional sprawl model prototype on the outskirts of a town, and the other one is in a small town, downtown, zero lot lines, apartments above, and it's a Waffle House. And the one with zero parking, dedicated parking spaces, is outperforming the other one by 15%, which is just a real interesting concept. It's kind of the new economy. And then they had some really fascinating concepts of economic development, you know, what's new, what's old. And I'm looking forward to sort of sharing that at some point with some people once I find out more about, you know, how to do it. So anyway, these are just two quick videos. I think they'll, you know, they're sort of feel-good videos, and I think everybody will enjoy them, but they do show the power of, you know, small Main Streets. And they also show what we've done right. I think that's the other thing, that when you look at this, you realize, you know, Edenton's done a lot of things right, and we have a lot to be proud of. So let them roll.
Main Streets are the heart of our communities. They are nations gathering places, places of shared memory, celebration, and economic activity. They represent the core American principles of ingenuity, inclusion, and creativity. Yet over the years, Main Streets have faced many challenges, from suburbanization to the deterioration of historic buildings, to the changing face of retail. While these challenges are formidable, today's Main Streets are resilient through hard work, planning, commitment, and action by local volunteers and leaders. Main Streets across America are thriving.
Main Street stands for Revitalize America.
Downtown is important because it's the heart and soul of Edenton. If you don't have a healthy downtown, you simply don't have a healthy town.
Everybody knows what it's like. Public Square is actually working, thriving. People are finding views there, walking back and forth. We all know what it's like to be in a community like that on a Saturday. The sun is shining, and you just feel great about being in a Main Street.
Main Street America is a nationwide leader with a proven track record revitalizing older historic downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts. The Main Street America Network brings together thousands of passionate local leaders who contribute their time, energy, and ideas to building more vibrant and sustainable communities.
Entrepreneurs have been the backbone of the American economy for two or four years. And I know that whether it's in the furthest rural corner of the country to a commercial district right in the heart of Chicago, there are men and women with desires to open their own business. What Main Street does is it helps to create the environment in which those businesses are a little bit easier to get up off the ground, and those businesses are more likely to succeed.
Main Streets are once again the incubators of small business and the launching pad of entrepreneurs. Great ideas are nurtured in communities that appreciate the value of local. The Main Street America Network knows how to encourage these pioneering businesses and how to create the environment to help them prosper.
This is a time-tested, comprehensive, market-based, and community-led approach, which has been employed in over 2,000 communities over the last 40 years.
If you want to see America grow, if you really want to see America grow, look at Main Street. Being a part of a network like this and get to share best practices across all kinds of markets, there may be plenty of areas that are different than yours, but somewhere out there, there's a market that's very, very similar. If you can study what they've done, then you can learn about it.
Successful economic development today is not about what you don't have, it's about what you do have. And one of the things that Main Street has done is make people aware of what the value of downtown historic buildings and how a small incremental approach to redevelopment can be the best approach. Too many communities for years thought economic development was all about the one big thing. But successful economic development is much more frequently by lots of small things working synergistically together off of a plan that makes sense. And so Main Street at its core is about creating a plan for the future.
Today, people are seeking out communities with character and places where they feel connected. Main Street America, downtowns and districts are places to raise families, start new businesses, build community, and forge the future.
So that's the first one. And the other guy that's on there, the African-American man is from, y'all have met him before, is Herb Henderson. I know you probably met him too, Steve. And he is from Henderson, North Carolina, and is helping with the hotel project. So and then this is, this was my favorite winner. We have a bunch of winners every year, but this is Covington, Kentucky, which is a small town under about 10,000 people. I think, I think that's how big it is.
I recall memories of parades in downtown. It was packed with people. You'd be shocked how rapidly our downtown declined.
From a young age, we had a lot of issues around poverty and crime. There were names like Covington that were used. You weren't proud to be from Covington. The good news is, I think that's really, really changed. We had a reputation issue, and so starting to embrace who we are and celebrate it was one of those first things where Main Street could really, really help with that.
It's helped shape our board so that we can find people that have talents and interests in specific areas based on the four points.
So it doesn't have to be, "I'm passionate about Main Street, but I'm passionate about bikes, I'm passionate about architecture," and putting them in a room. And that's where kind of the magic happens.
What's really unique about Covington is we have such a concentration of historic building stock. So much is intact from the late 1800s.
Renaissance group has focused five, yes, these are assets. They just opened a new apartment called the Blue Block. They really used their imagination to figure out how to turn a building that had been many different things over a century into a three-level living.
The hotel used to be Coppin's Department Store. And when you go inside, they still have displays of things that they would have had at the department store.
The idea of 114 rooms boutique hotel in the middle of Covington four or five years ago was like nutty.
These places were designed successfully because they're able 120 years later to be transitioned from a department store into a boutique hotel.
Giving it this grander of an urban, modern hotel while still leaving much of the exterior intact so you can still really see its history.
I think there's a number of benchmarks that Renaissance Covington will look back on and say those were crucial moments, those were great moments, separating from the city and becoming a standalone. 501(c)(3) is huge.
There were a lot of things that we wanted to do that were more risk-taking and sort of creative and out there, and being independent would allow us to do that.
It has a more personal feel, I believe. People can walk in the door, they don't feel like they're going to a governmental agency, they're going to see Katie, they're going to see Renaissance.
I think the Parkland Initiative last year branded Covington as being unique.
Curb, which was the name of the Parkland program, was really, you know, making a statement about, "Look what you can do in the size of a parking space."
And so it was enabled people to be engaged with each other and be on the street.
But then also took away a parking space, and then of course brought all sorts of people to the table, talk about, "What is the value of that?" And they're on both sides.
Losing those parking places was not a big deal in comparison to the amount of people that had brought down town.
We're very lucky in Covington to have a number of incubators and accelerators. When those sorts of things are happening, sort of naturally and independently, we're constantly trying to harness those into public events. We really wanted to home-grow entrepreneurship. One of the ways that we tried to do that was through pop-ups.
It also then introduces these entrepreneurs to our community. So we've had several of them go on and lease space on a permanent basis.
So we've had several of them go on and lease space on a permanent basis. To see the number of people walk into Covington, young people, I've not seen that since the 60s. So excited.
Covington's reputation, it's suffered a lot for a really long time. And I think today, when people think about Covington, they think about something completely different. They think about a place where cool things are going on, there are new businesses are opening, great events, and it's a place to be.
Anyway, I just wanted y'all to see that. You know, I think that little parking space contest they had, you know, what can you do in a parking space is really fascinating. And a lot of these towns have a lot of similarities with Edington, but it just was really interesting to watch and to be a part of. And I don't know, I misspoke about Covington, I think it is bigger than 10,000, but it's, I don't think it's a huge place, and it was in dire straits until the Main Street program brought it back. So that's all I had.
Thank you for sharing it. As you said, it's a very feel-good film, but it also shows what dedication, hard work, and good salesmanship can bring to a struggling downtown. So thank you for that. And hope your board members can make it down here in a couple years, that would be good.
We're tentatively on the books, so that's what...
That would be good.
Yeah.
All right. Next on our agenda are a series of public hearings, we scheduled the whole three of them here tonight and take after following that. And so in Ann Marie's absence, she has, Chief Four lines to give us a lead-up to each one of these, after which, all over the floor, public comment, and then we will take the appropriate action, or otherwise, depending on what happens during the hearings. But thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As the mayor said, Ann Marie asked me to step in and pinch-hit for three different cases we've got tonight. First one is case number TA 1701, a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding beekeeping in the city limits and extraterritorial jurisdiction. The main reason that this text amendment is put before you this evening is that there's been some cases that have made the legislation, if you don't address a specific instance, then it can be allowed within the town. Beekeeping is one of those that we don't address. Since we don't address it, it potentially could be brought anywhere within the city. By you adopting a text ordinance, a text amendment for this, you would identify where you would put it and where you would allow it, and therefore meet the intent of the law. I mean, you can see that those cases are there. Byrd versus Franklin City, the Supreme Court ruled that because zoning ordinances are to be liberally construed in favor of freedom of use, a general provision must spell and any prohibited use must be expressly listed in the ordinance itself. So because of that, and because you don't have it listed, you need to consider it. For those of you that don't know what beekeeping looks like, there are some hives and some different places that they've got them in cities and out of cities. So why do you need the ordinance? Because House Bill 44, which legislation counties from adopting or continuing any ordinance resolution that prohibits any person or entity from owning or possessing five or fewer hives. So the UDO doesn't mention those hives. Because it doesn't mention it, you need to address it in the code and ordinances. And what sections will be amended? Article 2, under the basic definitions; Article 6, supplementary use regulations; and Article 10, permissible uses. So in Article 10, you will add the definitions of bees, beekeeper, and hives. In the proposed amendments under Article 6, supplemental use regulations, you would add that no more than five hives could be permitted in a lot; that no hive shall be located in front of a side yard, or no hive shall be closer than 15 feet from any property; all beekeeping equipment and hives shall be maintained in good order and condition; beekeepers must be certified through the North Carolina State Beekeepers Association or similar organization; that the hives will be screened from public streets and right-ofways by a paint fence not less than four feet in height or an equivalent screening vegetation; that every effort shall be made to direct flight patterns to and from the hive away from sidewalks, public rights away; that the beekeeper shall maintain a suitable water source on-site to prevent off-site foraging; and the hives are required to be removed if the owner or beekeeper no longer maintains the hives. And then under Article 10, it would put it on your chart and put it as a special use permit. And that's all for that particular case.
Thank you, Chief. We're going to treat each one of these cases separately tonight, each one of the three. So having heard the presentation, first of all, council members, does anybody have any questions related to what you just saw and heard? If not, all over the floor, public comment. Okay. Floor is open. Anybody here tonight that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposed text amendment change as presented, the floor is yours. And all that we ask is you come to the podium, identify yourself, and you'll be happy to do what you have to say. Okay. Scene 01, we'll close the public hearing with respect to the UDO changes for beekeeping within the city limits of Edington. So council members, Chair would entertain a motion that we adopt the text amendment as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to that effect. Any comment or question? I will add this, there are only certain months in a calendar year that the Unified Development Ordinance may be amended, and May is one of those months. So therefore, we're taking action on these terms here tonight. Okay. Second case, the text amendment we're going to hear about next for the Unified Development Ordinance regards food trucks operating in the city limits of Edington and in our extraterritorial jurisdictions. Chief, please, sir.
Mayor, this is case number TA 1702, text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding food trucks in the city limits and its extraterritorial jurisdictions. Just a few pictures in case you didn't know what a truck or trailer looked like. So why the need for an amendment? Over the past five years, food trucks have become very popular all over the United States, particularly in urban areas with daily food traffic. The request for an amendment was prompted by multiple requests from food trucks. Recently, all requests were denied only because food trucks are not addressing the UDO. Same way with the beekeeping, because it's not addressed specifically within your UDO, it could be allowed, so therefore you need to take action to address it. The amendments are very broad. The reason that they're not more detailed is because you have other regulations that control them, such as the health code and your code of ordinances within the town, and you would, in the near future, adopt more strict regulations based upon those code of ordinances. Now, the sections that will be amended are Article 2, basic definitions; Article 6, supplemental use regulations; and Article 10, permissible uses. So in Article 2, basic definitions, you've got the mobile food vendor, the street vending unit, and the sidewalk vending unit. The mobile food vendor prepares food, serves food, general public, recurring basis from a license or moving vehicle or trailer. A street vending unit, a self-contained, readily movable trailer, or motorized wheeled vehicle currently registered with North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles, designed and equipped to serve food that is prepared and made ready for consumption at the point of sale that is removed each day from the location where the food is sold. And the sidewalk vending unit is a mobile food vendor business in which food that is prepared elsewhere and ready for consumption at the point of sale from or out of a non-motorized piece of equipment or equipment that is removed each day from the location where the food is sold. You would also add on Article 6, the regulations, except as otherwise provided herein, food trucks may only conduct business on privately-owned, non-residential property, subject to the written approval of the property owner. Vendors must operate in a safe, sanitary, and non-offensive manner. Complaints of unsafe conditions, excessive waste or noise from patients or machinery or other disruptive conditions to neighboring owners or occupants will be investigated and may be the cause for revoked permits or denied permit renewal. Permit requests shall be submitted to the town planning department staff and shall be referred to the health department, the tax department, the police department, public works department, and/or the fire marshal for review prior to action. All permits will be displayed during the food truck's hours of operation. Food truck may not be located in any portion of a parking lot. When and where such location will prevent use of parking spaces during regular hours of operation of the primary business on the lot unless the vendor provides documentation that the property owner permits use of the parking spaces. The food truck shall be positioned on designated parking spaces and shall not block drive aisles, other access to loading service areas, or emergency access and fire lanes. The fire truck must also be positioned at least 15 feet away from fire hydrants or any fire department connection and five feet from driveway entrances, utility boxes, vaults, alleys, handicap ramps, building entrances and exits, and tree trunks. Vendors must be located 1,000 feet from any approved events permitted by the town of Edington, except a qualified vendor at the event. Only one vendor may locate on a parcel at any time, at one time, unless vendors are participating in a permitted special event. No signage shall be allowed other than signs permanently attached to the motor vehicle and one portable menu sign with a changeable face, no more than six square feet in display area on the ground in the customer waiting area. The permit issued for the food truck business may be revoked if the vendor violates any of the provisions contained within this article. The town manager may revoke a permit if he or she determines the food truck vendor's operations are causing parking, traffic congestion, or litter problems either on or off the property where the use is located, or that such use is otherwise creating a danger to the public health or safety. Town manager reserves the right to temporarily suspend food truck permits during times of special events in the downtown area. This article and its requirements, rights, or privileges shall not apply to any respect to special events recognized by the town where food truck vendors are permitted to nonprofit fundraising events of three days or less duration where persons or organizations participate in duly-recognized fundraising events, including but not limited to religious, charitable, patriotic, philanthropic events, or to private events on a residential street of 12 hours or less in duration. And then it would also add in the chart that that would be a residential zoning district via special use permit.
Thank you, sir. I might add, too, that the proposed additions were gleaned in part from a lot of research done by our staff from other communities that permit food trucks. And it would be most suitable to our use here in Edington. So council members, having heard the chief's presentation regarding those changes to our UDO, anybody having any questions, they'll come in. Okay. Hearing none, we'll again open the floor for public comment. If there was anyone who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposed changes to our ordinance as just presented, please take the podium and state your name. We'd be happy to hear from you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Susan Beckwith, and I have a business here in Edington, Interbanks Inn and the Table Restaurant. And I wanted to thank you for your consideration of a food truck ordinance. I firmly believe that we have an opportunity here, talking about the last film that we just saw, what can you do with a parking space? So setting up a restaurant is a very expensive endeavor, and the type of food concept can often change. And what a food trailer or a food truck enables a small business person to do is come to your town and try a concept before having to secure a huge, large loan that they may or may not be viable for. It also gives more viability to people being downtown, and it brings people downtown. An event that I went to recently, I have an office building in Chesapeake, Virginia, where I used to have a company, and it's right near, it's on the waterway, it's on the intercoastal waterway. There's an event called Hump Day Wednesday. It's Hump Day Truck Day. And there are eight different food vendors every Wednesday, and it has become so popular, it attracts hundreds of people every Wednesday to the waterfront in Great Bridge in Chesapeake, Virginia. So much so that the Parks and Rec and the nonprofit that shares that space manages that event, and there's actually a private organization that signs food trailers up by March to begin in May, and it goes through November. So it has actually become a culinary event, two Wednesdays a month in Chesapeake. So we did some research on that, as well as what you can do with a parking space. And we feel like it's a real opportunity to bring other food vendors here as well that can help us become a destination for food. And what we do know is that the more restaurants that we have, the more really good restaurants that we have, and the more interesting food that we have, the more people it will attract. We've definitely seen that in our neighboring town of Kinston, where we have a restaurant that does really well, does really great food, then a brewery opens, we know that we're working on that. But we're missing an element because we don't allow, or we don't have a way to address and invite others in to showcase their food. And so with that, we would like for you to consider this ordinance. However, we feel that it is a little overreaching in some degrees. We understand that this came from a lot of different ordinances in other places, but our geography in our downtown is very unique. It's a very small area, and for example, the 15 feet from a curb or driveway would take out much of our downtown for reasonable parking of a food trailer. As well as the, well, the 15 feet, and then also the, so according to, by food, so that people can get to your food and you can have your signage, but the offset of 15 feet from the street or from a driveway would, when we're looking around at the area all around us, would really eliminate a lot of that area. So being able to go back and have our fire chief take a look at that, and for safety reasons, be able to tell us what would a proper offset be, and our set of circumstances would be recommended. Also, in the recommendations, or in some areas, they don't allow ABC service at all. And in a lot of these areas, especially on a hot summer day, like for example on Sunday, there are no restaurants in downtown that are serving lunch or serving dinner. And so yet, there are a lot of people that want to be down at the waterfront. For our particular business, we do a lot of online marketing and through Facebook marketing. And we, you know, you can hashtag different events, and we call it the Sunset Stroll. So it's actually where people photograph, and they'll send us their photographs, and they'll go down Broad Street, down Water Street, down here to the water, enjoy the sunset, and then come back, tuck into maybe Edington Bay Trading, or, and then tuck into one of the restaurants for dinner. So we promote that as well as the other restaurants, because we know that when people come to an area, they want to enjoy a lot of restaurants. And the more restaurants there are for them to enjoy, the longer they're going to stay. So that we know that tourism is on the rise in North Carolina, we also know that it's on the rise in Edington, and we're really, really excited about that. But we feel like we need to have ordinances that are going to open that up to other businesses coming in and showcasing their food. What can you do with a parking space? Well, I really light up when I see all those children's activities, what you can do with a parking space, as well as what can you do with a food trailer? Because to move it around and be able to change it and change the branding allows it to become something different. And that's something that sometimes a standalone restaurant doesn't allow for you to do. So for different festivals, you can provide different types of food, and you can move your trailer to different settings that are beneficial. So what we've done with our food trailer is that we have used it for charity work. We take a portion of what we make out of that, and we take those proceeds and we donate them to a charity. One of our charities has been the Smart Start Partnership for Children, the Chawan Proclamance Smart Start Partnership for Children, and we've done three events that we've donated for that. So it's also a way for a nonprofit to be able to... So it's also a way for a nonprofit to be able to, to distribute literature and let the community know about the services that they provide. Another really neat project that, that we're super interested in is the Catish Church Project, because it's located right across the street from our own, from our own business. It sits across the street from the Tilly Mine Cottage, which is a part of our inn. So we're very excited about, about the Oakham Street revitalization, the Catish Church, and the farmer's market that is all coming to that area. So we feel like it all plays together, and it all holds hands. An example of that would be for fencing for the farmer's market, for example, to be able to do vertical gardens, and for the, for restaurants to be able to sponsor those gardens and be able to harvest the food off of that and be able to use it in their restaurants, and in food trailers, and be able to provide, provide assistance in food for people that are coming to the farmer's market. So it really helps us become a community. Also, food trailers, if you invite them in, they can be at that new farmer's market, and that's going to be key. You know, we have a 30-foot trailer, so we're looking for a more permanent place to park it. And we have taken the, the little office there at the corner of Broad and Water Street, the little brick one-story. And we have two parking spaces in the back, but our, our trailer is a little bit longer. And what we would like to do on a trial basis is be able to have an ordinance that would allow us to park that trailer there. Ms. Audrey next door has the, who has the sewing shop. We've talked with her, our chef has talked with her. And we would very much, she's willing to give up one of her parking spaces for us to be able to put our food trailer there, try around the corner eats, try a couple of different concepts of very simple food. And it, so it does a lot. It gets, it allows us to showcase a few different things that we might not do in our restaurant. It allows us to service a visitor to Edington that's currently not being serviced on Sundays for lunch down at the waterfront, and for lunch down at the waterfront. And then it also allows us to partner with other organizations in the area for awareness about what they're doing, and, and the good work that they're doing, and to be able to fundraise for those. So I hope that you'll consider that, as well as the, as well as the 15-foot offset, that we could make that more appropriate, and maybe something that's in line with what our fire chief would recommend. And then the last bit, the ABC service. Do you always want to prohibit beer and wine sales? And I think that that needs to be addressed. We allow it for events, because we know that on a hot summer day when someone wants to eat a barbecue, or have a hot dog, or a fish taco, they might want a beer to go with it. So if we have a place to serve those in a way that meets with an ABC permit, are you going to allow that? So we would also like for that to be clarified and considered as well. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and for all of your investment in Edington thus far, and your thoughts about the proposed ordinance change here tonight. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Danielle Barker. I just kind of wanted to piggyback really quickly on what Susan said and a couple of the points she made. I think that the 15 feet away from a tree trunk kind of makes things a little difficult here downtown. I love the fact that we're surrounded by trees, so I don't want to see anyone go and start cutting those down, but, you know, just maybe to think a little bit more on, with the guidelines you put in place, where exactly that these food trucks could park, especially on the Sundays and Mondays when there aren't a lot of places downtown. Maybe once we start getting food trucks downtown in the area, we can have increased visitor traffic, hopefully. Off of that, we'll get some of the businesses to also start opening on Sundays and Mondays, and that'll help keep people in town. When visitors come to town, you know, you take a weekend off and you go visit. So I think working at the Barker House has given me a unique perspective. I deal with a lot of disappointment on things being closed, and them not having a lot of options of where to eat and where to shop during the weekends. So I'm hoping, especially with this food truck ordinance and the regulations that you do end up passing, that will be able to help promote and just really enliven the downtown during the weekend. So I just wanted to quick piggyback, but thank you for listening, and I do hope that we are able to do this.
Thank you. I'm looking at something here. Yeah, what is it, sir? Council members, anybody have any comments? So Chief, would you like to address some of the concerns you just heard?
We spoke earlier today, Ms. Susan and I, and she was asking specifically about the fire hydrants. With fire hydrants, the state code is three feet away from fire hydrants. So the only reason that I can think that the 15 feet came into play was three feet for the fire hydrants and 12 feet for the alleyway. And it lumped everything together into one 15-foot margin for fire department connections and alleyways. And we do have a couple of FDCs that are in alleyways that we would need the 12-foot to be able to get the truck there, plus three foot for the FDC. I would have no objection if council and the manager would like to amend it to say specifically three foot for hydrant and 12 feet for alleyways, rather than a one lump sum of 15 feet total. But those were my only comments, sir.
Okay. Do you think we should, like, just let staff have one more pass at this before we vote on it? Because I think both those ideas are great ideas that Susan brought up, and that way we are able to, you know, just look into those two things. We need all the vibrancy we can get downtown, especially on a Sunday.
And if I might, real quick, if you were to continue this meeting and a continuance, you could take it up to 22nd and allow staff to have the chance to make those changes between now and the 22nd. So you could call the meeting to a continuance and not shut the public hearing down, just call a continuance on this one case and pick it back up the 22nd with no problem? If you chose to do that.
Yeah, because I was concerned about if we miss the month of May, then we're going to miss the summer season, then we're going to miss a lot of people that'll be coming and going from this town to...
Next month will be August, I believe.
Yeah, is that what it is?
So if you, if, if the mayor and the council chose, they could continue it till the 22nd for your meeting?
And then they could ask the man?
Yes, sir. If you chose to.
Well, I'll make a motion to do that. That's all right.
Sure.
And the two items that you'd like us to address specifically, or that you have concerns with, as I understand, just for Ann Marie's clarification and Tammy's, is that the three foot and the 15-foot being too much to look at that one section for the three foot for hydrants and 12-foot for alleyways? Or was there other concerns?
Evidently not.
What is it? Excuse me. Is that going to make a difference? You know, if you do three foot and then 12-foot, that's still 15-foot, so...
Not, not for all, sir, not for all locations. Not for each location, no, sir. It would for some locations. This one specific instance, she has an alleyway that she'd like to put it in, there's not an FDC on that alley, so it would reduce it to 12 from 15. Where on another location, say the Host, the Hotel Hinton, for example, that has an alleyway with an FDC, that would still need to be three and 12 to be the 15th.
Also, Chief and staff, if you would, if this motion passes to the table, or continuing, what's the proper language here? My buddy's not here to keep me straight. I'd like to know, and I'm sure a lot of council members, with this definition, tell us where it can take place, you know, physically. It can take place over here, it can take place over there, just so we, as a governing body, can get some idea as to where the trucks would be located. I think that would help in the ultimate...
I certainly could carry that back to staff, sir.
Okay.
And I think the appropriate thing would be for you to continue this meeting, not adjourned, but continue.
Right.
On the 22nd at 6:00 PM. That way you don't have to do the public notices, and you'll still be within the guidelines.
Correct. We're having a discussion, I don't recall a second. Did we get one?
Second.
Okay.
Did we ever close the public hearing? Did we close the public hearing?
No, you did not, sir.
No, we didn't.
Need to close the public hearing and do a continuance if that's what you'd like, sir.
Okay, is anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and now take into consideration the motion and the second that has been made to continue this discussion to a special meeting, which would be prior to the regularly scheduled committee meetings on May the...
22nd, sir.
22nd. Any further questions or comments on the, hearing in our favor, right? Any further note? Okay, we'll continue this item till the 22nd. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
For navigating us through that. And now, please, case number TA 1703.
Yes, sir. The next case is TA 1703, a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding video sweepstakes. This falls into the same as the beekeeping and the service trucks, food trucks. Since it's not specifically identified in your UDO, you need to address it. The article definitions that would add will be electronic gaming operations under Article 2. Any enterprise established as a principal use utilizing electronic machines, including computers, as game promotions. In a game promotion, a person may conduct a game of chance in conjunction with the sale of consumer products or services and/or for which the elements of chance and prize are present. This item includes, but is not limited to, sweepstakes or internet cafes. This does not include any lottery approved by the state and local law. And then you would add, under Article 6, maximum number of computer terminals is 20. If food or beverage is served, the establishment must meet the requirements of abnormal regional health services, including all necessary permits and/or licenses. No alcoholic beverages will be served or consumed on the premises of the establishment. The establishment must be 400 feet from any building used for residential purposes. The establishment must be a minimum of 1,500 feet from another establishment or business engaged in electronic gaming operations. Hours of operations will be limited to 8:00 AM through 10:00 PM daily. Electronic gaming operations must be established as a principal use. Gaming machines shall not be permitted as an accessory to a new or an existing commercial operation. Patrons and employees must be 21 years of age or older. And then it would also add it to the table as a commercial highway district conditional use permit. And that is all, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions or comments about the video gaming ordinance?
May I have got a comment on this particular issue? Because I've seen these things in action, and I, several years back, when there was one that was trying to open, I, I know it was trying to be opened as a computer store. And I mentioned to Ann Marie to be real careful when these people came into town, because it was apparently a new way for people to take money off of people that live in this town and in this county. And I have witnessed firsthand the sad stories that come out of these electronic gambling machines. To be quite honest, and I'm probably getting ready to stick my foot in my mouth if we ever got sued over this, no, I don't want any of them in this town. It's the worst thing that can possibly happen. But I would like to see us, on, on the one, one item where it was 20 machines, I'd like to see us cut that back to 10 machines at the very most, or whatever we can legally get away with. I'd like to see it cut back to zero, but...
Yeah, I agree with you.
And I realize putting it in highway commercial, it's going to be a lot limited area, but, but I'm telling you, this is the worst possible thing that can happen to this town. And, and whatever we can do to make it harder for someone to open this business, I want to do it. So I'm going to throw that out, that we limit it to 10 machines instead of 20 machines.
Couldn't agree more with Steve on that. I'm thoroughly confused. The state said a couple of years ago, whenever it was, they closed them out, we couldn't do it. Now they're coming back and saying we can't tell them that they can't do it? That's what I thought they were closed. Yeah, I'm thoroughly confused over this thing, but I agree...
I think it depends on your DA.
I'm sorry?
I think it depends on your DA and your sheriff, or whatever.
Well, it was a, it was a state mandate.
Yeah, but, but it's, it has changed. I don't know if the chief wants to comment or not, but it, it has changed that, that you can still have them, because they're still out there.
I can say Amy Womble, our district attorney, has said he will charge them, and he's shutting them down in District, District, District. So it does depend a lot on the district attorney and how they go with it. For right now, no one's opening District, 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 that I'm aware of, because he's shutting them down.
And again, the reason we're looking at it for the UDO to put a text amendment is if you don't put it in the UDO and it is not specifically addressed, then it can be open because you're not addressing it. And so that one law, Byrd versus Franklin, said that you have to address it to either allow it or deny it, and where you would put it. And that's the reason that Ann Marie has brought this before you, so that you are able to put it on the charts, so that then you can control it and regulate it.
Suppose we just put it in an industrial park? Just let them put it in one place, you know, four or five...
Majority of the population.
I'm with Steve. I say let's make it as hard as possible.
I agree. I mean...
Yeah, and just to refresh, that was 2012, and we did impose a moratorium at that time.
Yes, sir.
Which has since expired, of course, and in this court ruling that has said, as it states in our notes for tonight, simply put, the town can no longer deny a use because it is not expressly, expressly listed. So, but I, this looks like another one to me that we can refer back to our staff and put it on as item two for May 22nd. If y'all agree with that, I certainly am to have a motion to that.
And, okay, and then I'll make some comments after that. Even if we can add two also, I mean, that you, it has to be, you know, 3,000 foot away from a school, or, you know, 3,000 foot away from a church. And if you, if you do it exactly right, there won't be anywhere for them to come. You know, we want to get the food trucks here, so we want to try to, you know, compact that. We want to try to stretch system a little as much as we possibly can.
I would like to carry that back to staff.
Yeah, I would like to see it just made as totally as restrictive as, as possible, and restrict them to the, you know, the, the one place where they won't want to go, whatever that is.
You know, some interpretation of the law has to do with intent, right? So we intend not to have that. That's what I'm hearing.
Mayor, if you would, just close the public hearing before you take care of your business.
Yeah, you're right. Thanks for the reminder again. Does anyone else, or does anyone have any open here, Chief?
Oh, go ahead.
I got carried away. I'll open the floor for public comment relative to this amendment that's being discussed right now relative to the permission to locate electronic gaming parlors, if you will, in the city limits of Edington as presented. Yes, sir?
Chuck Schmeler, 211 East Water Street, Edington. I have the great misfortune to spend several months in the wintertime in the great state of Florida. And these institutions are rampant there. They sort of crawl into shopping centers here and there. And my own opinion of them is that for folks that are on fixed incomes, these things are quite the curse. Because once folks become, I'll say the term addicted to this, then if they're on a fixed income, they can't meet their needs. And what makes it worse is if they happen to have dependence of any sort, then they suffer as well. Now, I'm a little bit confused from the conversation. Are we able to just say no? Because if we can just say no, why don't we just say no, instead of concocting a construct that could be picked apart in court? Just say no? Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Other comments? Okay, now that we've gotten the force of that before the card, anybody else have any thoughts or comments? We did have a motion come forward in the second, that we would refer this back... We, we did have a motion come forward in the second that we would refer this back also to May 22nd committee meeting and make it part of the special meeting, which we've already asked for, relative to the food truck ordinance. Further questions or comments?
I got one. I think we ought to ask, could, whether or not we can just say no.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Yeah, I like that. I mean, we can just say no, let's say no.
Yeah. We did it before. I mean, we put the moratorium on, but something happened at the Supreme.
Supreme Court.
I think it's probably one of those things that if you don't do it and then all of a sudden they allow them again in the state of North Carolina, then you're stuck with not having a...
Not having a place to define where they can and cannot operate. Yeah, I, I understand the need, provided the law forces our hand at a later date. Or maybe it already has, but we'll ask our attorney that and have that part of the conversation on the 22nd. Okay. Given no further discussion, all in favor of continuing this item to May 22nd? So if I say aye? Opposed, no? Okay, we will do that as well. Thank you very much. Good discussion. Thank you for your comments on all these cases of those of you who spoke up tonight at our public hearing. I always have to hear from you. And that concludes our public hearing for this season. Now we'll move on to item seven, which is our committee reports. Tonight, we will hear from three of our committees. The Utilities Committee, the Administrative Committee, and Finance Committee. Beginning with Utilities. Chair by Councilman Quinn, who's absent, so I'll ask Councilman Vaughn if he would call the items in the Utilities Committee report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This afternoon, the Utility Committee has two items that they want to bring in front of the council to vote on. Excuse me. The first one, it is recommended that the council approve engineering service agreement for waterway spray field improvements as presented. We can take them one at a time, or you want me to go ahead and do them all together?
No, we do, we need to do it in a minute. You can put that in the form of a motion.
Put that in the form of a motion? One more second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to proceed with the service agreement for the waterway spray field. And the only thing I would add is if we've got permission from the state to make these improvements in a timely sort of fashion, so we need to get the process moving along. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, no? All right, thank you very much. Next item?
Okay, the next item, it is recommended that the council approve grant agreement with the North Carolina Department of Commerce for disaster recovery and fracture project to videotape and clean sanitary sewer lines and manholes as presented. I put that in the form of a motion?
Second? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement to videotape and clean our sanitary sewer lines. And if y'all recall, the map we got when we had our committee meeting on this, this is gonna be a very extensive job. I think they're gonna approve virtually every pipe we have underground, which is a good thing. And slip line, those damaged ones where it's feasible and practical to do so. It's a very good thing. Any further comments? All in favor, aye? Any opposed, no? That motion carries as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving now to Administrative Committee Chair by Councilman Diggs, please.
Mayor, we only have one item on the agenda tonight, and it is recommended that the council direct staff to develop recommendations for services available to residential landlords to conduct background investigations for prospective tenants as presented. And as y'all will remember, at our last meeting, we, even during our retreat, or we talked about this extensively, I mean, and, and, you know, I'm glad that the, the chief has some service companies out there that he has found that will do this for minimal fee. And hopefully we can adopt some language that landlords would certainly want to use this. So I will put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And this will be a directive to the staff to develop recommendations for the services available to address the background check.
Yes, sir.
That we have encountered in this community for too long. And any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, no? Thank you very much. And moving now to Finance Committee Chair by Councilman Dixon, please.
We have one thing on, and it's very simple. It's recommended that the council adopt, I mean, approve the budget amendment as presented, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Motion and a second to approve the budget amendment as presented. All in favor, aye? Opposed, no? All right, thank you very much. Moving now to New Business. We have a budget amendment reflecting the rotating beacon grant that's available to us out of the airport. Our current beacon is non-operating, and we have what looks like to be a pretty nice grant.
Yeah.
$10,000 cost, $9,000 grant. They don't get much better than that. So, Harry, you got any comments you'd like to make relative to the...
No, sir. It's a good deal.
Right. Probably required too, right, by...
Pardon?
Probably required as well.
Statistically, it is required. Ours is illuminated, but it's old, tired, and broken and does not rotate. It is illuminated, but we do need to do it.
It's been home to too many buzzards risking it. All right, very good. With that, then, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the voted amendment so that we can participate in the airport rotating beacon grant.
A second.
Any motion, Sandy? What was it? I didn't hear a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Two face.
Okay. Any further comments? All in favor, aye? Any opposed, no? All right, we'll be about getting that put to bid. Second on the New Business, Renewable Energy Development Services Agreement with the North Carolina Eastern Municipal Power Agents. We don't have anyone, Jennifer, can you help us with that? Just a brief description would be suitable.
Okay, in 2007, legislation was adopted that mandated renewable energy requirements. And the power agency manages these requirements on behalf of the town. And this agreement was in place before the sale of assets, but in error, it was left out when the new agreements were adopted. So the agency has prepared a new agreement with basically the same terms as the old agreement. And Hood Ellis has seen this agreement and he has reviewed it. So it's just pretty much the same agreement as what we had before.
Yeah, it was essentially an oversight, right?
Yes.
When they reinstated what they took away, they only did one of them instead of two?
Yes.
In the simplest of terms? Okay. Any questions or comments relative to the Renewable Energy Services Agreement?
Hood was good with it. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, further questions? All right, Chair, we entertain a motion that we approve.
Second? Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed, no? All right, thank you very much. Item nine, councilmembers, any items considered timely and important that you would like to share with your colleagues this evening?
Mayor, I have one. I've had several people to talk to me about the project that we have undertaken so far as buying these houses and redoing these houses and this type of thing. And I'm not sure I did a really good job at explaining it. And I would like for the viewing public to be informed as to exactly what we're doing. We're not gonna be in the, we're not gonna be in the real estate business. We're just trying to get these houses redone and sell the, or sell them to prospective landlords. We're not gonna be in the landlord business. Don't wanna be. So if you could, either you or Sam Barrow...
I'll give it a shot. A few years back, we engaged the services of the Holland Group down in Wilmington to come into Edington and help us with an assessment of our housing stock. And among other things, it led to the site selection for the new police department. And also, it brought a definition to the availability, rather, of a process whereby the town could become, or designate redevelopment zones. And in so doing, which we did do, we agreed to form a commission to oversee that. And the commission is the governing body of the town. So we oversee the process as it moves forward. It's pretty complex. If Sam Barrow was still here, he could explain to everyone that this process requires that the town go back to the present owners of the property, offer to buy the property or encourage them to go ahead and restore and repair the property to acceptable use going forward. The obvious reason for this is we wanted to deal with some of our more blighted neighborhoods to bring some vibrancy back to those neighborhoods, to bring some added value back to the properties within those neighborhoods. So in a, in a most desirable situation, the town would contact the owners of the property. The owners of the property would agree to sell the property to the town, I believe it's at the tax-applied price.
Well, I think we're getting them below, we had, we had this appraisal done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, I'm sorry, it is required that we have an appraisal done to establish a value that we then offer to the landowner. As Councilman Stallant says, we are not in the real estate business. We are acquiring these properties for resale or repurposing and refurbishing and put back on the marketplace to provide housing at, at a level that we don't have a whole lot of inventory for in the town of Edington. The lower to mid-price point homes are hard to come by. So we acquired two properties now. These are the first two properties that we have acquired. And we have also, in the interim, developed the list of investors who are interested in buying these properties, when, if they become available and are put on the market. So that's where we are now with these two properties. We're closing on them. We're gonna put them back out on the market. We're gonna contact the people who've already expressed an interest to us that they wanna purchase them and fix them up and resell them. So that's pretty much it. Got anything else?
Good, good job.
Thank you. But it, it is all about, it is all about taking better care of our infill, as it's called in the business, where housing has fallen to a substandard condition and can no longer be used or has been abandoned or threatens to be abandoned. And so this is an initiative that this council took upon itself several years ago, beginning with the demolition by neglect ordinance, and now followed up with these redevelopment zones, of which there are two in Edington. There's one over on Oak Street, there's another one over on Mosley Street. So hopefully we'll get a lot more properties made available to us in the near future so we can get them fixed up and moved into.
Yeah, I'm like you said, it's driven by the people living in those areas. I mean, they were on the committee and they helped form the, you know, the, the data that we needed to, to do this.
Yeah.
Because they met, they met every, I mean, I don't have often they met, but they met for a long time before we even did this.
And as Councilman Stallant suggested, we are not in the real estate business. We're not gonna make a profit on these sales. We're just gonna pass them through and hope for the best, which was, which is clearly better than the condition that they're in right now.
Absolutely.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mayor, because, you know, you have two or three people that asked a question, just several more, so thank you.
Definitely.
Yeah. All right, any other items from our side? Okay, hearing none, all over the floor back up again for public comment. Anybody here tonight that would like to bring a matter of whatever before the council? We'd be happy to hear from you. Okay, seeing none, we close the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. And the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second? All in favor, aye? All right, leaving the joint. Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all.